So move.
One second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll just go right to our visitors. We got a bunch tonight. We'll go to John Wald right away.
I'm here representing Plowton County about your policing contract, the health insurance number, slightly. If you guys are still agreeable to the contract, if it increases.
I gotta find that here. Did you guys, have you had a chance to look at that? Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't send that to them. I just sent the one sheet of paper there.
I got it in here somewhere, sorry. Okay, right now it's at eleven-ten. Is that quarterly, monthly? What are we looking at here? Monthly? It's going up to twelve-seventeen-oh-two?
Yep.
On the health insurance side?
Yeah.
Okay. To me, that's not bad. A bunch of insurances going up the last few years. It's... You guys have any questions or problems with that?
As commissioners, we're always on the state's butt about keeping it down. Not that it helps, but... It's how we want it sometimes. So if it's okay with you, is it minutes and the minutes that you guys are okay with, the increase?
We'll take a motion to approve that increase to twelve-hundred-seventeen dollars and two cents.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
No, that's all I got. Just... Send that to the...
Same thing, we covered it.
Okay.
Got it.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thanks for coming. Sharon O'Handley is next on. Okay.
So I want to set up a market in Park. I'm thinking, once a month or every other month, really want to bring in more businesses to Gackel. Whether it's local producers, local vendors that are like myself, I'm an owner of a boutique here that's kind of mobile. Really just want to serve the community. I want to bring in a bounce house. In your packet, you're gonna see the... their liability insurance. So we wouldn't have any liability towards this. Six months out of the road, kid says he broke his shoulder in a bounce house. We're not liable. They are. It's in the contract as well. And then we want...
Who you rented from is in...
Yeah, they're all liable for it. That's not... If we don't want to do it, that's totally fine. I just wanted something to bring the families in. But there's different ideas. If you don't like bounce houses, we can do pop color again. We could just do like pop-free popcorn, anything to bring those families in. There's a lot of young families in this city, outside the city. From there. So we talked about ideas to bring into the goods. We have fresh produce. We have owners of boutiques. We have some direct sale companies that are also interested in being vendors. They talked about possibly having a fee to set up. I was thinking anywhere between fifteen and twenty dollars to have someone come in and sell their stuff here. To give back to the community, since the park board said they would let us use their venue, we would figure out what a good amount would be to give back. Whether we want to do sixty, forty, something to give back to the community since we're gonna use that. And other towns nearby do the same thing. Medina has a really nice market. They started last year. And if William had the market, I'm gonna go check that out tomorrow. Any questions?
On the bottom, you're in handwriting, there's local businesses asked to use vacant lots.
Yes. I put a forum out on Facebook, kind of getting some feelers, what people thought. And two of the local businesses wanted to try to use the vacant lots that are near them. And I believe it's the theater that's right here, they thought something about that. I didn't really think of that. I wanted something that was more accessible to everybody, where they had like the playground and stuff too. So that's an idea too, that we could use the vacant lot. Some people bounced around the idea of using like a street fair, so you would have to shut the street down to do that. But that's a lot more in-depth than what I think we need to be doing. But it's kind of what we want to do as a whole, and what we can do.
I like the park better myself, I guess, off Main Street. What's Mike's opinion on that?
Yeah.
Like you said, with all the playgrounds, bathrooms, all that stuff down there.
I think it's more accessible to everybody.
I think it's a good idea myself, as long as we got it even covered. I know one of the questions that was raised was the liability on... You covered that, Alex. What's that?
And the other one would be who, you clean up everything after yourself?
Yes. I have talked to several other... Talked to the T-ball coach, she's willing to help out. Hatta Berkeley's willing to help out. Katie Ruff is gonna help out. So I have some feelers of people that will help, hoping to make the park board want to help if they have time. Really, any volunteers would be a help. I'll get my husband to help with the trash. So it will all be, will look as good or better than what we left it, so... Or found it.
You guys got any problems or thoughts on that? I think it's a great idea. Yeah? Do we need a permit for that then, or what do you...
No.
Okay. Yeah, I guess you have our approval, if that's what we're...
Great.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, not a problem.
Are you gonna do a motion for that, or just guess you approve it?
You can, I guess. Take a motion to approve flea market once or twice a month, or how do you guys want to look at it?
I'll make the motion.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for stopping by.
Thank you.
To... Beth, you're here.
What's her?
Okay, so you're...
Anybody have questions about park board? We're on board on the city first, so...
I figured that, yeah.
Yeah, you bet.
David, what do you got for us tonight?
I'm here on behalf of your RV park, and I've just got a couple of issues. And to bring us up to speed, I want to go back to when my business started. It was about twenty-three years ago. Trump Weister's mayor, I don't remember who, was on the council, but they approached me and asked me if I'd be interested in putting up a park. At that time, and I don't know if it changed, there was no camping allowed in the park. And there used to be a sign that had to be vacated by ten PM. I don't know what happened to those, or if you guys changed the rules. But anyway, I came to a couple of council meetings, and after agreeing with the council and the mayor, that I would go ahead and I would make the investment and put my park, because there was no place for any people traveling through the state. The city would pay for the water, or they donate the water, the sewer, and the garbage. Well, since that time, the councils have changed, the mayors have changed. It started with one... Down the road, all of a sudden, they wanted me to start paying for infrastructure. I came to the meeting and we discussed that. That was no big deal. But to make the long story short, I am now paying, after this agreement that the city would donate it, I'm now paying commercial garbage. I'm paying water, I'm paying sewer. And it seems like the things that are happening, does the city want an RV park? Because you guys are strangling me, this council right here and the park board. Now, I mean, I don't know how many times this has happened, but now there's people who were allowed to camp down the park. Some of the good... I've relied in the fall of the year for duck hunters have helped pay for that place. And all of a sudden, I got a councilman, I won't mention names, that's going around. Last year, I've gone from a full RV park during Duck Fest to last year, zero. Why? Because somebody went around and put up gangs of electrical hookups, and now everybody's staying at those places for free, or whatever they're charging. So I guess it's up to you guys. When I went into this with the city, I said, as long as I don't go backwards, I'll make the investment. But if I'm gonna take my own money to run the place, which is getting darn close now, on years like this, when it's just an occasional person coming through. So it's up to the city. I'll shut it down, and I'll pull the hookups out, I'll push the building down, and I'll be rid of my monthly fees. So it's up to you guys. I mean, I can't do nothing about, you know, putting up hookups all around town, these, you know, there's no rules against that. I mean, what are we gonna do? Either you want an RV park, I mean, I'm competing against the own, our own council. I don't know if you see it my way, but you're my only competition. So I'd just like to know what your feelings are about this.
I guess I wasn't aware of all this myself, so until now, but I don't want your guys to stop. I know that was quite a few years ago, when you said about the infrastructure fees and all that, when you changed over to rural water. You know?
Yeah, I know all of that, because all of a sudden, the city was paying for their water instead of coming out of wells, you know, so... But, right, I mean, it... After the rural water, it went to reading the meter once a year, and I was paying for the usage, but now it's full monthly fee. And I'll deal with that. I mean, I... I'll... I mean, like I said, my wife and I agreed to this, and if we go backwards, there's no reason for me to keep the RV lot going.
I don't want to see that.
That was like that when I came on board. What is it, David? When do I shut you off where you don't have any bill? I think you may have...
It's October fifteenth. It's whenever Bill and I agreed to shut the water off.
So he does have, he doesn't pay the full year, but he does pay those months, and he does pay all of it. And that's how it was when I came on board.
Yeah, it was before you shared.
Yeah.
My question is, is this... Is this all over some schoolteachers spending a week, five days at the park?
My problem?
No, I'm just asking if this is what stems this problem.
Well, I mean, you, the city...
Because I never deny anybody to go up to the park. I mean, I... People ask all the time.
If it was a standing room, that's why I was approached by the mayor, because there was no camping allowed in the park. And that's, that's how this whole RV park came about. I was waiting to invest, and I invested about twenty-five grand putting the hookups in the building. But I'm not gonna lose money at it. And so, I mean, if your feelings, it's okay with you to start letting people camp in the park, is that, is that what...
I know a group of teachers that come here once a year, for the last two years, though. They spend a week down at the park. They donate, let's see, a little bit of money to the park board to accommodate some of the restroom facilities and what have you. But other than that, I guess I don't know if anybody... I guess I'm a little confused on your concern.
Look, if it's once or ten times, are you guys gonna now allow people to camp in the park? That was, I mean, it was, it's how this whole RV park started up there. It was because the city did not allow any overnight camping, and it had to be vacated by ten o'clock. On the southeast, southeast corner of the park, there used to be a sign there. That sign has been taken down. It used to say, I think, vacate by ten PM, or yes, or what?
I think, I think when that all started is when we had these cyclist thing come through, when we were letting cyclists stay down there. If I remember it, that's when it all changed.
I don't know.
You know, as far as letting them stay down there? That's what I think. I'm pretty sure on that, but I'm not positive, Dave. I know, I sure like having an RV park in town also.
Absolutely.
I didn't realize we're competing against you, but I don't know.
Can I speak for the group that comes to the park? They felt terrible that the park board was put under fire after they left. They have since purchased a lot in Gackel. They do love it here. They did have an RV in the RV park while all of their tents were in the park, but they will not be staying in the park any longer. And they felt pretty awful that it caused such turmoil since they've been here a couple of years, so... They will not be there next year. They have a lot now in town. They've purchased.
So what, can we help, I guess, so we can discuss it, and I don't think we should make the decision tonight on...
No, that's fine.
I mean, do you, do you want us to knock off like the water fee? I mean, I'm just asking. I'm not...
Well, I mean, if, if we're gonna continue putting up gang hookups for RVs, why should I pay a monthly fee when they can start staying other places? I mean, I hope you understand where I'm coming from. You guys are the ones squeezing me out. If I, I'll finish out this year. If I don't show a positive in the books, I won't open next year. I'll tell you now, I'm gonna just close it down. You guys can lose the rest, revenue, what I pay every month. It won't bother me.
Where would these gang hookups at?
I think there was one by the fire hall, there was one by the legion hall, and then a few years ago, we had a trail rider come through town. I had my whole RV lot reserved out, and there was, I think, I was waiting for one more person to come in. And so I got out there to see where we were gonna put the last person, and everybody was gone. And I didn't know what happened. And I go down here, and you put up, you put up a great big gang hookup down here. Every one of my reservations went off and hooked up down there. You don't recall that, Lauren?
Yeah, I did it.
Well, if you don't, that hurts my business.
I was asked by the, oh, the horse club from the street, or whatever it was. Because they didn't want to have the horses wherever scattered out. They want them at one location, because of corralling. I never even thought of it. I'll admit it.
Well, I mean, and shit happens, okay? I'm just saying, if you guys continue to squeeze me, I'm just gonna be done.
What I would recommend, as far as the fire hall, that's for the duck fest. That's the only time I've had it there. And that's the... I don't know, is it Brownie? They're a big donator. They wanted their prizes next to the fire hall, or next to the bar. I guess I'd say talk to the duck fest committee.
I'm not talking to anybody. I'm bringing this to the council. So, I mean, if the council's okay with it, there's nothing I can do. If you want to keep putting hookups around town, that's up to the council. There's no, no rule against it. But I'm just saying, if you guys want to continue with RV park in town, you gotta consider... One of my plans.
I'll talk to the Health Brothers, or the Health as far as the duck fest. And the Horse Club, same way. When they come, I'm gonna have them say, well, I was restricted.
Well, I'm not restricted. I mean, the council should make a decision.
It's not really the council either.
Yeah, I didn't...
I mean, if you guys want to continue down that path, go back to your original agreement. Don't charge me water, don't charge me sewer, don't charge me garbage. That way, I've got one monthly fee, and that's electricity, and that's based on if I got people up there. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, that's why I was asking what you, I mean, okay?
Water, we pay for now, though.
For the water, I can still, still go back to Bill reading the meter every fall when he shuts me off. I mean, we've never had a problem with that. I mean, it's, it's fair that I, I mean, even, even after what we agreed to, but the city has paid for water now, I mean, I'll, I'll pay for the water, and...
No, like I said, we don't want to make a decision tonight.
No, that's all.
Talk forward. No, I appreciate you coming in.
Are you making me leave?
No.
I'm just kidding.
Start now, see...
I don't care for it.
No, if there's nothing else, then we should move on, but if not, we'll...
No, that's, I just had to get that off my mind, so...
Okay. You guys got any more questions for him before we... Sounds good. Thanks, David. We got Dwayne Schlittenhardt, his last one for my missus.
Well, this is another camper issue. Coming to the group here, being the second one, David, feels a little bit like Pepe Le Pew coming to the door meeting. See, there should be... So the reason I'm coming is this. Additional ones, anyone? I'm more than happy to give one. And I also have one.
I can't agree with that.
The, a year ago, actually, it'd be November of last year, November first, Jeannie was at the house, and I got it. You guys came to the house with the sheriff's deputy, not Andrew here, but that's... Good job, this one, Andrew. But you guys came to the house and issued a warrant, a summons, rather, to me. You'll see, you're gonna see in this document that, number one, I wrote a letter. Here, I'm gonna read the letter first of all, and then I want to come back to the whole issue. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm appearing today for two issues. Issue number one is I'm making a second request for the official notice of dismissal that I asked for last year that our attorney has required, or that has recommended we get from you, from the summons of, summons number five-nine-one-six-six-one-four, which you presented to my wife, Jeannie, on November first, twenty-twenty-two. When I met with you at your November board, council meeting, I made the request in a letter stated November third of twenty-twenty-two, but have not received an official notice of dismissal. So that ordinance, that summons still sits out there. This ordinance, the ordinance we were cited was under three-point-zero-two-zero-one obstruction penalty, which may have been your issue in the community at that time regarding other areas within the community. But we all got blanketed, or at least I did, and Jeannie and I did, with regard to the camper. Now, to me, it's a principal issue. This is what this is all about. Number one, I have never gotten a dismissal of this, of this citation. So being the fact that it was your issue with regard to other things going on in this community unrelated to us, we all got cited. At least I got cited for this issue, and certainly, it was not about bullets and campers in good condition, and particularly, our camper. That's issue number one. So the issue is about making your second request to have dismissal from the summons. Issue number two is regarding city ordinances. And this is the one that probably is the most unsavory of the whole issue. City ordinances are being selectively enforced, selectively by ordinance and selected by individuals and constituents. The offensive of, offenses of the ordinances and selection of defendants appear arbitrarily chosen and not uniformly enforced. The practice is discriminatory, and the result is injustice under the law. So I'm requesting the council to change ordinance number nine-point-one-four-one-zero, which I've got copied in the back for your benefit. It's called stopping parking, and again, these all come as a package that you were given by these... You were, you were given these ordinances at one point in time, and you might be adding to them. But I'm requesting that you change this nine-point-one-four-one-zero stopping parking over forty-eight hours to reflect on the current practices and lack of enforcement today within the city of Gackel. The current ordinance reads, it shall be unlawful for anyone to park or leave standing on public streets or highways in the city, any vehicle for a period longer than forty-eight hours consecutively. Provided, this section shall not include any area where a shorter time is provided for parking. Currently, there are many vehicles within the city which do not even meet this requirement. The city of Gackel, vehicles, you may have been in violation of that ordinance. I'm requesting that the ordinance be, that the ordinance for vehicles... I'm requesting that the ordinance be modified to reflect the current practice where vehicles have been left standing for extended periods of time, to include months on end. There have been days when semi-tractors, trailers have been parked on the streets in direct violation of not only nine-point-one-four-one-zero, which is the forty-eight hour, but also three-point-zero-two-zero-nine, which is heavy vehicles, where heavy vehicles are not allowed on city streets except for state and federal highways. The language I'm requesting to be added to ordinance nine-point-one-four-one-zero, or to have a separate ordinance, is, is that the forty-eight hours be dropped to reflect current practice, and the city adopt language, similar to that adopted in Jamestown in two thousand seventeen. I've included that as well on the back page. This would include the seasonal parking of campers and RVs, which are in good working condition on city streets in Gackel in the front of owners' homes, but not within thirty feet of an intersection, much like the Jamestown ordinance. While the problem we were attempting to fix last year still continues to be unresolved. What I'm asking for you to do is allow legal parking of RVs on the streets of Gackel to support the recreational opportunities of our region and our state that offers for our citizens. The summer and fall will see an influx of campers, hopefully, and bullets for those who want to enjoy the natural resource we have here. Why aren't we trying to capture those individuals instead of making their parking on the city streets of Gackel illegal? Now, this is parking, not camping. Camping is to deal with what we've biggest talked about. I'm talking about strictly parking of vehicles. We should be welcoming those sportsmen, and they're gonna be coming this fall. You've already talked about Duck Fest. They're gonna be coming, and they're gonna make retail sales available in this, in the city of Gackel instead of encouraging or discouraging in their presence by these ordinances that were developed as a template by the League of Cities. Instead of discouraging them, I'm asking that you think about encouraging these people to come to Gackel. I know up on the area where we live, there's going to be, for at least four weeks, there's gonna be campers and trailers and things parked on the street. And yet, those aren't ticketed. So how is an indiscriminate use of tickets for those who, those of us who live here appropriate, as opposed to those who come in transiently? Thank goodness they come. So I'm asking you, for you, to consider, number one, that we take a look at these ordinances. They're not, they're not uniformly enforced, and they're indiscriminately fined. And I, as I said, on number one, I'm asking for a second request for an official notice of dismissal, which I think you voted on, but I never had a letter from you all, as, as a way to resolve the issue of having that summons put together for us last year. Questions?
We had a number of them that were dismissed, and when they were given out, they said, if you rectify...
That's not the necessary, you give it, if you are going to give a state, excuse me, but if you're gonna give, I don't know what attorney would have given you that information, but if you're gonna give North Dakota uniform complaint summons, you have to rectify it by some process. Either it's excused, and the, and the violator that you had originally accused has to have a way to have a dismissal. That's what our attorney told us. I even told you that last year. So you need to, you need to offer up a dismissal, not just a vote. Because for all I know, I have no idea where that sits. But I don't want to have it be in history somewhere, and all of a sudden, pop up and have no dismissal offered up by the council. Because then we're gonna be just like David, sitting here twenty years later, and all of a sudden, the promises made are promises kept.
So do we, maybe you guys could help us with that? You just got a lot of Paul Hammers in?
Paul Hammers, right, and a dismissal letter. Either a judge or the state's attorney will be on it, and then a dismissal.
But if you're gonna offer up a, your summons, you have to offer up a dismissal if you're not gonna file a charge, is correct?
Yes.
That's what our attorney told us, and I didn't get that.
Yes.
There was a difference between municipal court...
There could be. I mean, I don't deal a ton of municipal court, typically districts. There could be something where the city council can issue a dismissal, but if there is, I guess, I don't know.
But your attorney told you to do something that you never had a remedy to do the opposite. Because you're filing a North Dakota uniform complaint and summons with a serial number on it. That thing goes into a registry somewhere, and it has to be, it has to be rectified some way. Either you dismiss it...
So the municipal tickets don't get filed with the other tickets that we write?
How do I know?
In district court, they get filed under, like, the any public court system?
Yeah, I don't...
Where then municipal court tickets are held at the city level for seven years after seven... Municipal court tickets are held at the city level for seven years after seven years.
25 years later, we come back and we have a situation.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
No, I understand. I'm not arguing with you. What I'm saying is that we only have a conversation here. Thank goodness we have a recording. But we have no idea whether there's a remedy that's gonna be needed in time to come or not, and everybody here will be gone in that timeframe.
Right, that's what I was saying. We can request a letter from the judge that sold your ticket, Paul Hammers. He can write up a letter saying your citation number was officially dismissed.
Okay, and that's exactly what I asked for last year. The only other thing I'm asking, that the council consider an ordinance change of some sort because last year you lumped everyone together under the same ordinance of obstruction. That's where this one came from. And that's, that wasn't at all what, if you actually go to the definition of obstruction, that wasn't at all what I had up there. So we're trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how I can help you. Because I came there, I came last year offering an opportunity to say, why doesn't the city council consider licensing or, or, or ticketing, not ticketing, but licensing the campers and things on the street? So you can determine whether or not you want to have those on the street because they're in good working order. And then you control.
Because we have one on the street, that's the whole thing? That's what we voted on? So let me ask you this thing quick. What do you use your camper on that street for? Does anyone ever stay?
Charging, cleaning.
No one ever stays in there?
Nobody ever stays in there.
No one ever stays in there, okay. So I just, you said we're trying to help Dave on this one, that's why I was confused.
No, no, no. It's two separate issues, but it's kind of the same issue because it deals with the fact that.
So if he comes over, we're writing permits for people to keep campers on the streets.
This is, this is not to live in a camper on the.
So you know what's gonna happen.
Then you have a right, then you have the right to do exactly what you did. You can create a summons to take those people out of the camper.
So the reason the tickets were actually cited was the obstruction of snow removal. I know you wrote those tickets last year.
You know where my camper was in the wintertime? My camper was on the driveway, so there was no snow removal in November.
Right, but with coming up, what, November 1st, the citation was issued.
No, well, we gave everyone plenty of fair warning before we went out and blanketed or whatever.
How did you give us warning? Did you give me a written notice? No?
No, we had people stop down and just say this is coming.
Is that, is that official in the city of Gackel?
No, but it's a polite heads up, I would say, because it's an ordinance.
But how would I know, how would I know that someone coming to the door?
Because it's in the ordinances, which you have clearly right there.
It doesn't have anything at all on notice.
We said that we are going around before snowfall and getting everything off the street. We made that clear. We gave everyone a fair heads up.
And it was off the street.
Okay, no, it wasn't prior to that, or else you wouldn't have got written up for it.
There was no snowfall in November 1st.
How do we know when it's gonna snowfall?
I don't, excuse me. All I'm asking for you is, let's go back to the original request. I'm asking that you consider a seasonal opportunity for people to keep their campers on the street from April 1st or whatever date until October 31st, and they're off. And I even talked about permitting.
We have discussed that numerous times here until it was voted down.
It was voted down, and there's other issues with that too. You've got, you've got 50 amp or 30 amp cords going across sidewalks, impeding that. This was thought through relatively.
50 amps.
How are you gonna charge a camper?
15 amps.
15 amps. It's still an extension cord across your sidewalk, no?
It's right across my grass.
You don't have a sidewalk in between them?
I don't know.
No, I mean, I mean, it's.
Here's the thing, can I, can I, can I ask it? Can I ask if there'd ever be a study group that would actually look at this thing instead of making a snap decision at the council meeting?
I would like to comment on that. We just about three months ago, our ordinance is our district pair.
Yes, they are.
There's no question about it. The problem is, if two, more than two councilmen meet, it's a quorum.
Understand.
So we can't meet. And technically, we're not even supposed to talk to one another outside of this room. So every meeting we have, we need to have it posted and 48 hour notice open to the public. How in the hell are we supposed to rewrite ordinance? We're not as fortunate as Jamestown or a lot of the towns have committees. Are you willing to be on that committee?
Yeah, you bet.
Then form the committee, report back to us when you revise this whole ordinance thing.
Well, I won't take on here, I won't take on that plethora of problems you have in that ordinance book, because I've written all of them. But I will take on this one for you. And I will make sure that I put together a group of people that can understand what the situation is. And we'll come back and we'll talk to you. How's that?
Then bring it back, then we'll submit it to the state's attorney because there's requirements for what that ordinance has to contain.
So can I get you to do a motion on that one, that we create a committee that I'm allowed to do that? Because otherwise, I'm on my own. So you need to, mayor, mayor, offer up that opportunity.
I think we need, but only for discussion. I think we should have one committee do all the ordinances. Not just pick and choose, we got 20 different committees.
Now you're responsible for all of them. Now your work's gonna look for you.
You're gonna join me, David.
Yeah.
And I'd make that motion, that we form a committee and they're responsible, get this ordinance book completely up to date. Because right now, I can't find, um, was it 9.1410 in here at all?
It's in, it's in the bottom. I mean, I have to have the electronic version. I don't know what you have there.
Well, the plain version, I oppose to it because people ask me. And we come down here and we look in this book and we can't find it. What good does it do? I don't know what computer it's in and where at.
What I provided for you came right off your webs, off your, your list of ordinances.
It's gotta be in here, in hard print.
I'm hard, I'm, let's come back to this. If the city wants to do that, I'm more than willing to help take it on.
I'll make a motion that the committee get formed and you're responsible. You can choose your members.
All right.
You're chairman of that committee, and they're gonna rewrite our ordinance to meet our requirements. And present it to the council.
A second? I don't have a problem with it. This is kind of, it gives me time to think about it a little bit, but I don't see anything negative.
Can I offer a suggestion? That we table this until the next meeting and I have an opportunity to talk to one of you? Can I talk to one of you legally? You choose who I will be.
You're welcome to talk to anybody.
Well, okay, but I will talk to one of you at a time, but I can't talk to two of you.
You can talk to two, it is not three.
Okay, but if you will table this, I will come back with some suggestions and we will work it out.
That would be.
That'd be great.
That'd be a lot thrown at our.
Yeah, but table it for tonight, if you will. I'm just, I'm just asking for a table motion until the time when we can come back and get some, get our arms around this, so you can see what I see on the website. Oh, not the website, on the electronic version of this thing. It is very, very incomplete. It looks like, it came from the League of Cities is where it came from.
Yeah, we adopted it from them because we had other problems.
Yes. But what happened is that you had some that were there and some that weren't. When they, when you imported them, they came in with different fonts, the, the language is written goofy, I'm sorry. And the end of the day, I'm more than happy to help the city with this one. But I think if you table it, at least I can start with one of you or two of you at a time and we can find some people that would be willing to serve on that committee.
Table it?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Who's the first one?
Larry, second, but Jeff, all of them in favor.
You have some work to do there if you do that, buddy. I'm out of here.
All right.
And I'll just give you guys an example. The question came up with setback from property lines. Well, first off, it's hard to determine sometimes what is the property line. But secondly, I, I have heard, as long as I've been on the council, it's always been said three feet. Somebody else, they were told 18 inches. I went through this whole book and I cannot find a one word where it talks about setback. So now, what do you tell the people? You bring them down here and you can't find it. As a matter of fact, it was the abstract office. He just shook his head. He said, "We couldn't find nothing that talks setback." So he's kind of up against the wall too with giving people. And it was over the purchase of a home or sale of a home here in town. We don't have nothing in writing. Unless it's some electronic stuff in some computer, but it don't do us no good.
Let me print out, let me print out what I've got for you and we'll compare them to what you've got there. And then we'll come back. And that's why I want you to table it, so that I can compare what you got versus the electronic version that I was given.
And then you looked in the old ordinance books too then?
I looked, that's the only one I could find. And there is nothing.
Can I use your copy, your share?
Sure.
I'll bring it, I'll bring my computer out.
Anything else then?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any else for him, guys?
Sorry, one right here.
No, no, I'll come back. This one's gonna be the night.
No.
I gotta get my laptop.
Thursday morning, I'll be here.
All right. Bill, what do you got for us? We're good then? Andrew, you good right there?
Yeah.
Just Kyle, you're good? You don't have anything for us? Okay. Bill, what do you got?
Oh, I got a fire break on the main. That was at the fire hall. That was nylon fitting. That was cracked. That'll be on the fire hall though. Fire hall, state fire department or district would take that one.
Bill, what was that?
One of them break?
Yeah. What I have gotten, the bill already from D-Wall?
I'll be back to on that.
Okay, because I might have, I mean, I think I've already paid that bill. Except the one we had to replace the sidewalk.
Nope.
No, it's a different one.
Thanks for coming in, beautiful.
Thank you, guys.
And down there, Tom's neighbors down there, Tom, they were able to get that water up.
Parachute didn't open. Parachute didn't open.
I can't hear.
They don't have a meter in there either. The curb stopped next to Tom's, that's a ward.
Their bill's over $500 now in Gackel. The only thing they ever made was an $8 deposit.
Is the car in the shoe, was it good? Good.
That tar can last a while, or you gotta keep it in just like certain temperature?
We use it all.
Oh, you use your own?
Oh, or two barrels. We did one barrel on each side of town, pretty much covered it, and then we did the parking lot.
House of roads, rural avenues, getting cracks in them or anything?
No. Gonna do it real bad, it's the only thing.
Did we use a whole bucket on the church?
Yeah.
So I, I, I gave it a bill for?
One whole bucket?
Yeah. I just figured we don't need to labor whatever they do to the tar. I think that's what they thought was up, I think it was, for the barrel. I don't know about, you just blow it.
Did you guys hear anything else? Good. Okay, other?
Um, we have for tomorrow, two waters that are getting turned off would be the Tyler Simon from over here that where the old, um.
Terry.
Terry, Tasty Freeze lady lift. That one gets shut off tomorrow and Shamika crack. Now the one.
I thought she was gone.
She was supposed to be gone on the first. She never left. She was supposed to be gone on the first. So, um, the owner of the house came up this past weekend because I talked to him and let him know.
Oh, she didn't buy that?
She was buying it, but she never paid the bills.
Okay. At least we got a.
Um, he, they, he's on the sold again, but this time sold it, sold. They sold on August 1st. But he had to have her out of there. And she was still in here this last weekend, but I did, the real estate lady called me and asked me what the specials were on there. And I said, "You need to make sure the owner knows there's a bill sitting here for the city for almost $300 that needs to be paid." So she said, "Okay." Then she, I, I called him and let him know it was sitting here. He will pay the bill. But he said he would like you to go ahead and shut it off. It would be shut off tomorrow morning because of non-payment. But then he would, he's coming this weekend. And I told him we were ready to cut his grass too, and he asked if we would wait till he would come up this past weekend and he voted all, got it together. She was still there, but she wasn't in the house at that moment. So this weekend, he's coming with new locks, changing the locks, and, um.
At least we're getting paid, that's all I care about.
I think she's gone now too, I heard she went to Colorado.
Somebody was there today.
Did she take the kids?
No.
Winnie had the kids.
Winnie had the kids, but. So I know Mike, my deputy, had to go over there and sound like she was leaving and going to Colorado.
Okay. Well, that's what, he said she was still around this weekend, past weekend. Because he went in the house.
That would've been Saturday, if he was over here.
Yeah, so he is changing his locks on his house this weekend and his sisters are coming downtown cleaning because it's in a bad way and he has it sold already. But he will take care of his bill. And he wanted to know if we can, if we let it shut off, will he have to pay that $8 reconnection fee? He wants it shut off because in case she isn't there, that because of the water, she would go. Because it's due to shut.
I guess if he pays his bill, I'm okay with.
He's gonna pay it.
Not shut off, just to get.
Yeah, I, I told him.
You guys up to the head now?
Okay. And then one other thing is, um, when people, residents call, call you commissioner, commissioners, councilman, and they want to get put on the agenda, could you do me a favor and just say either call city hall, leave a message on the machine, or call me? That way, I can, I'll have, I usually, if I'm not at home, I have them text me in so I can look at my texts. So that way, I can get, I have a piece of paper I keep on my desk, anything for the city meeting. So that I know, you know, like David just called me 15 minutes before the meeting and he had talked to a council member and I knew nothing about it, so we had to shut them on. And that's it, right?
Okay, Joe Mordell's not here tonight. He didn't leave anything with, he didn't say anything to me, I guess, so we're good there. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just, on that zoning, being that word came up. The abstract office, what the heck's his name?
Brian?
Brian Jangula. He recommended we put a zoning ordinance in place. Okay, because we, that's what he was looking for too, and we couldn't find nothing. And I said, "I don't think there is a zoning ordinance."
Well, we had discussed it before and we just said there's no reason for us to spend money on it, right? Oh, a few years. What a benefit, what are we missing, I guess, is my question.
You know, I can't remember what he said on that. I'd have to talk to him and ask.
Because I know we had looked into it, but it just wasn't, you know, really fitting with our city. But if there's something that's.
Because existing would be grandfathered. He said, "Don't worry about existing," but he was more leaning from down the road.
Jeff, you want to let us know on that then, I guess? Uh, Jeff, you got anything?
I don't. Anybody seen any streetlights? I haven't seen anything. Seems to be, everything seems to be good so far.
I haven't heard anything or seen myself, never really, finally, at all. Larry, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
No. Other than, you know, if these guys now that were in the park bought property. And don't quote me on that, but that's another area that gets gray. Because I think there's something in the ordinance they cannot tend if there's no bathroom and water facilities.
If there's a camper on there, does that cover it then?
I'd have to, I thought, I just vaguely remember reading something about it. Because I thought, boy, that's kind of.
I think they brought a camper with them. I would give you a lot of that, but.
I just think it's a hard, in my opinion, and it's not that I care about having 50 people in the park. I'm not a big fan of that either, but they picked up, they donated, they helped put a fire out, they, I mean, they're for once a year.
I have absolutely no problem with those guys in that park.
It's not nondiscriminatory. I just think we can let them do it for three or four or five days once a year. That's my opinion, but.
I have, absolutely.
I mean, they're not living there, loyally raising, causing issues.
And, and some of the treatment that the park board received on that bombarded from, from the top all the way down is bullshit.
Park board received on that, bombarded from, from the top all the way down, is bullshit. I mean, they got hammered.
I know, back with this horse deal. They didn't, they were, I think, I didn't know that they were reserved up there. But part of it was, they corralled the horses and they wanted to be by the horses.
I'm just saying.
Want to have a horse, but I don't know where he'd have put him up there. And they had quite a group of horses.
It was, well, it was a huge group of people with the, with the horse traders. They couldn't have put all those horse traders up there. There was, there were twenty horse traders down here.
And I know one group that hooked up behind the fire hall. The reason they left up there was because of the shape of the shower rooms. And I agree, I was, I looked in there, oh my God.
I just think it puts.
They need to clean it, seriously.
Okay.
It puts it in a tough spot. It's three or four instances in five, ten years, so it's, it's a tough deal.
Yeah.
Okay. Old business, we got DOT paved the streets for Fourth of July. John left. I was gonna thank him for getting that all done. Permits for Bill. Did you get all your stuff done?
Pretty much.
For Dwayne? Uh, look over North Dakota State Fire and Tornado Fund. Trash dumpster for county, bottom broken. I think we took care of the dumpsters.
Did you get some dumpsters?
Yep.
Nice.
We took a four yarder up there. Like, next time if we go get another two or three dumpsters, I'm gonna take that one out. I'd say I don't need nothing that big.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for doing that. Okay. Thanks, Lauren.
Oh. As far as the dumpsters, Bill mentioned something. You know, some of these dumpsters are setting on dirt. Then they freeze in in the fall or towards winter. And then the wheels get wrecked, you know, when they hook on and bust them out of the frozen dirt. What would you guys think if we offered to the people? Where the city would, form it? You know, like Bill and I talked, it doesn't take much to form an area on a person's property. And pour a concrete slab and set them on concrete.
That's a great idea, but Millers did it just not too long ago. We put a bill on everything. It should be done just to accommodate him.
It should be done regardless. He pays for it.
But it had the, not the city pay for the concrete. The concrete would be the owner's expense.
Oh, yeah.
We would only do the farming.
Okay.
And the prep work. Try to keep the cost down.
Sure. Yeah.
I mean, you can see what the cost or S and S is to come over here and perform what?
How many are we talking here?
Um, there's two at the care center.
And that's a gray area because the dumpsters are setting on Dean Ingman's property. And I don't know where to put them at the care center, so we stay on their property for the truck to get back to.
Right.
Why couldn't we go up to the bar and request money, you know, just like down here they did? See if they had money that they would be willing to, they would pay for this to be done for some reason. So it's a benefit to the city.
I know. And I told you for a four yarder, you're looking maybe at about two yards of cement. So what is it, a hundred and twenty?
Seven year, you know?
Hundred and seventy.
Which is.
So it's about three hundred and forty bucks. For a.
No, I, I think it's a good idea. Even if, whatever it makes is. Joke a little bit, but I'm hung for that too.
Then we could get a price together and just talk to the owners once and then we'd come back with it.
I'd say we do a little more work into that. I think it's a great idea, but just before.
I think they need to have something, something under them, because.
And we're talking, most of these are businesses, correct? Not so much homeowners?
Yeah, like Terry Griffith, he's got one that's just, that one's.
Rough shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one, the wheels are both sticking out in all four directions and just because it's so soft there, it's, it's frozen in. You know, most of the time when they're frozen that hard, we don't pick them up with the cable or the same came by hand.
I would say talk to them and see and just see if we're willing to help out, as long as they help. I mean, we're, we're willing to get new dumpsters and do all this work. I guess it's, to me, it's.
It's old cottage and another one that's just sitting there.
Maybe do some checking in, some asking and see.
How long you got that for? Who is this property wrecked by Cotton Cottage? Now, is, is the city owning that now?
Community developed.
Community developing it to us? Because you could almost incorporate a care center with them if they were on the same path. I don't know.
Well, that would be an option.
Yeah. They, they only carry their garbage up there.
Probably make them.
Got enough shit tonight, Lauren. I guess ask around and see what we get for comments before we.
But I would say from now on, if they want a dumpster, they're gonna have to have some sort of concrete slab there.
Yeah, because those are getting spendy.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys.
Depends if it's a home private one, you know, that's, that's different.
Wow.
Right. But keep businesses for sure.
Alright, new business, we got billing from Schlecht and Schultz, which I thought was right then what he quoted us last year, so I think they did a nice job down there.
Lauren, do you remember what account we were taking out of this thing?
Sixty-eight hundred bucks. I thought that was a pretty good damn deal.
Ooh.
Well, we taken it from what we had left over. Remember we had some left over?
I don't know. I thought we had asked more engineering for.
No. That was for.
We had money left, you know?
We have money left and we can use that for that. Is that where the account, you want me to take it from? There's like twelve thousand dollars.
We approved it last year.
There's twelve, there's like twelve thousand dollars in that account.
Pretty sure, yeah.
Alright, so I'll use that account.
I don't know if you guys need to see that. It was sixty-eight hundred bucks. I thought very well worth it.
Well done.
And Lauren had said he's, they're working on the grates and getting them on top. So those should be done soon, so that's.
And I would say they're gonna be about another sixteen hundred probably.
Then I'll take them out of the same account.
Iron and paint and whatnot.
Okay, perfect. Thanks guys for doing that. Uh, just set that there too. We got storm bolt cover, sorry. Snow emergency money from state, that came in. Thanks, Lauren, and I don't know, did you, whoever helped with that, thank you guys very much. Because that was for sixteen thousand seven hundred and three dollars that they got back for the city. For all the extra snow removal and all that, so. Lauren, I know that was a lot of work.
That's a copy for me. You can give that one to Lauren.
There's a thing about this, if you want to look through there.
Oh.
It'll make sense to you.
I expected about half of that, to be honest with you. I was shocked when she said.
Yeah, I made that copy, Lauren, so you can keep it and put it in the sm- snow route.
And then every year we get these, uh, notice of application for appropriation of water. We have three of them, one for Preston Fettig, one for Joey Fettig, and one for Lou Holberg. I'm not sure how this is gonna affect us at all, but just supposed to bring it up. We don't get a motion.
No, we just need to see them.
That it's a.
It's probably they're putting in irrigation or something. More than likely.
Nine hundred gallons a minute, I would say so. If you guys have any questions on that, what proposed?
I think we just get them because of part Logan.
Southeast Water Users, oh yeah, the increase of water prices for January is gonna be up twenty-five cents per hundred gallons. Or sorry, per thousand gallons. The curve rate's three fifty. New rate's gonna be three seventy-five. Do we want to just match that? Because it's not like, we just did that study last year. We went too far ahead on the water in the way it was.
I think we should. We better match it, otherwise we're gonna be.
Ten years from now, we're gonna be.
Wait for January, twenty twenty four. It, it starts January twenty twenty four, so I guess.
So what, I was taking a motion to approve a twenty-five cent increase to match southeast district water.
I'll make that motion.
Per thousand gallons, okay? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it's, we better, we'll, like last time when we had to raise a dollar, whatever the hell it was.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, policing contract, health insurance, we've covered that already. Sherman Hannity's good. Schulten Hart's gonna permit for, oh, permit for Gaco Fire Department raffle.
We didn't approve the building permit, see, they were. Oh, no, they were up here, never mind.
Those are old business, correct? Uh, motion to approve the Gaco Fire Department raffle.
I'll make that motion as well.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys have a chance?
Can I ask you one thing about the policing contract? Do we have a newer one than this one? It doesn't have all the rates. Remember when you came here and asked for more money? This is the policing contract I got from Napoleon.
Okay, I can email you the most current one.
The most current. She doesn't have one, so I suggest give her one too, because this still has the old rates of.
Okay, because.
Old rates.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll email you the most updated one.
And then give her that one and then I will send her this showing that we approved it.
Okay.
So she can put it in with that.
Okay.
Because when I looked at it, I was like, okay.
What year is the one that you have?
Sure, you have it there, please. You can have that one there.
August twenty? Twenty twenty? Twenty twenty. Okay.
Because I thought you brought us a new one and we approved more money for health insurance.
Why you guys are looking, uh, in durf, uh, North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. Had this add, all the new stuff around town from park. The snack shack is one. Onto insurance. You guys can look at these if you want, but we went through, I know you went through last time, we had to do this with Erica. The pickleball court, fence, all that stuff in case of vandalism, I guess, I don't know what else they cover, but vandalism or storms. Heritage Park Building, warming house, that's covered now. Um, what else we got? Must be it. So anything, everything that came through with that grant down there is now covered. That'd be the, well, I'm not sure with the grant, but that crack filling machine will be insured too. Did you add that on?
Yes, we did.
Perfect, okay. And if you guys got any questions, you can sure look through. Um, sure, Erica and, or Jamie will come in and give us that whole breakdown again. We'll sure give it to you guys when it comes in to look at if there will be corrections or additions or anything like that. But I don't know, do you guys have any questions on that? Okay, that's just, everything that was just previously built, so I don't, we don't need a motion for that, but. Uh, then, do you guys get a chance to look at the bills? Any questions?
Hey, Team Lab?
That was all our tar, right?
Oh.
Was that the tar, the Team Lab?
Yeah.
That makes sense. It was tar and then, uh, more.
More what?
Enzymes for the sewer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was on cheap.
The tar was spending, but one bucket goes to the church and one, the other one's here.
Are you happy with your computer yearly same issue and stuff?
Yeah, whereas the computer is yearly, that is, so I call them at any point in time and they are, they're, that, yes, they're very well.
And they're, and they're.
They're very helpful.
Okay? That's pretty cheap. We have vertical at the elevator. Mine is way more. Any more questions, guys? If now I'll take a motion to approve